Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled Board of Selecting meeting for Monday, September 20th, 2021 to order. Charlie, first order of business, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Item two, on the agenda, public forum. Is there anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Seeing no one from the public here in the meeting or on Zoom, I think we'll move on to item three, and that's approve the minutes of September 7th, 2021 regular meeting. Is there a motion for signature?
I'll make a motion.
There's a second. Any comments, questions, changes suggested?
I have mine.
I have? No, nothing. Good. Call a question. Try your minds. All in favor? Aye, aye. Post any accusations. Hearing them, motion carries. Item four, Finance Director, Mary Jane Malvasse. Come on up. Or come on up, don't really say my name.
Good morning. Revenue comes up. Start with revenues. So on the revenue side, so this is a report as of August 31st, obviously includes July and August, since we didn't really report on July last month. Our revenues are down slightly compared to last year. There's a, you know, it's not really any one particular department, although tax collection is down slightly from this time last year. Could have an effect on the amount of the budget for that line item, but I don't know if you have any specific questions. I don't have anything really significant to discuss as far as the revenues are concerned.
Is the, are there delayed payment opportunities in place still?
No.
So, I mean, two points on the tax line is a pretty big amount. What do we think was driving that this year?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd have to, again, look at, look at the numbers. Sometimes the percentages don't always tell the, tell the right story.
Yeah.
I do know last year we had a significant amount of people pay in advance.
Okay.
And we didn't, and it wasn't as high this year, so there weren't people doing that this year. I don't know if that has an effect on it. I also didn't check the collections for September 1st, because that actually was the due date this year. It was not the end of the
Oh, I see. It wasn't talking stories.
Right.
Oh, okay. That can make a difference.
That sure can.
Yeah. It's concerning, all the stories we are hearing about, you know, mortgage moratoriums and things like that, expiring of potential foreclosures. Do you think that that plays into the
I'd have to speak to Debbie. I wouldn't know anything, I wouldn't know the specifics behind the numbers as far as those types of questions. I can certainly have a discussion with her and get back to you guys.
I would say if, if things fall in the line and September was just a surge at the very, at the deadline next month, report, that'd be great news to hear. If, in fact, there's something else going on, sure, we'd be really interested.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'd just rather discuss it with her before.
Of course.
Just said, where was it? Golf course still is running pretty high.
Correct. Down from last year, because people are back at work a little bit more now. So all of you golfers that were coming out on your lunch hour, whatever, but still, obviously, higher than they have historically seen at this point.
Speaking of golf course, have any idea what they raised for the, on that tournament they ran a couple of weeks ago?
I don't have the final numbers, no. We're still got, still getting invoices in and as such, so I don't have final numbers.
And that money would all just go to their operating account? That's not like a
Correct. It comes in through here, in their event lines.
Okay.
Okay, cool. All right. Any other questions on revenue? Okay, expenditures.
It's a little slow this morning. It must knows it's Monday. It knows it's Monday. While my, while it's loading, I do know that expenses bottom line were a little higher than where we were last year. But if you look at the Board of Ed line, if you look at the difference between the town and the Board of Ed, you'll see the town, if I'm remembering correctly, is pretty spot on, and the Board of Ed is, is a little higher. They must have had some one-time expenditures that went out earlier rather than later this year. So, again, the expenditures are, for the town side, are pretty consistent to what we've seen last year.
Okay. Any specific questions? No, that's fine. That's honorable to you. It's early in the year anyway. Okay. Lawrence, medical? If they have any questions on Lawrence, we save those for quarter finances usually tonight. And medical?
Medical, you will see that, I have nothing for the month of July. The only withdrawal that came out, July, was the very 1st of July, which was actually June expenses. So those were accounted for in the, in the prior year. And typically, I'm not sure why Anthem's system does this every July. It must have something to do with just how they manage their finances on their end. We typically don't see July expenses come out until August. So you'll see, I have $1.5 million that actually came out in August. Looking at the detail, it's hard for me to determine, you know, what was really July. I do have a question into our consultant about that, so that I have a better understanding. Other than that, I'd just like to say that the budget for both the revenue expenditures was adjusted by $200,000, because the town took a $50,000 reduction, and the Board of Ed took $150,000 deduction, as we discussed through the budget season for, out of there. So we've, that $200,000 is reflective in, in the budget. So we do have, we did have a good year last year, and if I can get my computer to get down to where the bottom line is, but my computer is just not, yeah, projecting, yeah, over $7 million at this, at this point. So we'll talk about it a little bit.
I saw the agenda. And just in terms of the two-month claims, that would be about, what, seven?
Yeah, it's still, still low.
Still low. So you're projecting, it is early, you know, two months in, a surplus of over $300,000 for this.
Right. Remember, last year, a surplus was very high throughout the year until the end, and then it kind of dropped down. We ended up with only a $300,000 surplus at the end of the year. So it kind of works its way out towards the end, hopefully.
And I think what we're seeing here is somewhat of a leveling off after moving to the HSA.
Yes.
I think it has been, I wouldn't say volatile, but there's been the intended outcome, which is better control of the medical costs.
Correct.
As those were introduced over the previous, it's really seven or eight years now, I think, right? Charlie, as you guys started introducing the HSAs prior to us, prior to these most recent round of contracts. Okay. Anything further? Item four dot two, Consider Take Possible Action to Authorize Transfers from Home-Assigned Fund Balance and the Medical Fund Balance. Mary Jane, just wanted to go over those.
Yeah, we'll start with the standard transfers. So you'll see, of course, these are all unaudited figures. Our auditors are probably trickling in as we speak. They're going to be here for the next two weeks. But, so I had an unaudited balance in the unassigned fund balance of approximately $13 million. Our policy has us looking for 10% of our budget, which would be 10.5 million, leaving a $2.5 million delta between there. So we are looking, I have a request for $1,236,512 from unassigned fund balance into the line items listed here. Matt, did we want to go through them one at a time? Is that what you'd like to do? So fund balance committed to technology. If you remember, last year, we had a number of items that we came to you and said, these are the things that we're looking for technology. We did end up using some of that money for other COVID-related expenses that we hadn't identified. So we are looking to replenish that fund. And in addition, we, one of the items also was the permitting program over at Town Hall South that we were looking into. And we ended, ended up buying a more robust program than we had originally intended. So this $150,000 is to supplement those items.
And also probably offsets on the costs associated with the community center.
Yes.
I was just going to ask that. Yeah.
Thanks, Matt. Yes.
That's, that's in progress.
Yeah, it actually started this week.
Yeah.
Physical install started this week, starting this week.
Any other questions on the technology line? Okay. The next is disaster relief. Last year, we did put in $150,000 to cover anything that we had requested through COVID that might not be covered. And we are coming up now with some of those items that FEMA is now determining. They're, they're not covering some of the equipment that, that we said and various things. So, so I'd like to hold on to that money just to supplement anything that we do not get reimbursed for, which we are expecting. I am asking for an additional $300,000 in that line item, because believe it or not, we still have open items back from Irene, Sandy. I've been working on these items, as Matt can tell you, for the whole five years I've been here. We did bring in a large amount of money during that time, but there are some still outstanding items for those. And I've committed myself to finalize those items this year with FEMA and either to get whatever money we can, and in the end, to just finally close out these projects.
What kind of dollars are we talking about?
It's close to $300,000. But, but we had, you know, it was, we brought in
I would think of the cost benefit there from it. I mean, if it was $10,000, I'd say just wipe it. $300's worth.
Right.
And if good fortune smiles on us, and Mary Jane's successfully getting it, we'll just, you know, that money will just fall off on balance, whatever comes back. That kind of money's worth some.
Right. And that's, and that's over, you know, a number of different, most of it is Sandy and Irene, but there's also other, other small ones along the way that, believe it or not, we just provided payroll records for Sandy, that they, they just always asked for more documentation. Luckily, my office was able to, to put that together. So hoping that that will, will help. But they're just lingering items, like I said, I've been working on. And it's getting to the point where it's just almost not worth our time anymore, because we're not getting anywhere with it. You know, we're just seeing like we're, you know.
Is it worth bringing any political force?
Yeah, we'll talk to, we'll talk to the
We can. These, these are, we're talking, you know, we've brought in $1 million or more for, for all of these things, and this is just the, the residual.
Well, we have the connections now, so just use everything and get it over.
Yeah. So that would be the worst-case scenario. I think, I added it up, I think it's like $286,000. So I just rounded to three, but, you know, that, that would be worst-case scenario. And I just, just last week, two of our proposals went up to the highest, you know, highest end to get, you know, hopefully, so we can get some money back.
So, so Mary Jane, thank you for all that. And no one can really appreciate how much digging through the weeds it takes to get these things addressed. And everybody appreciates that. Just for clarification, because you're living it, which means you have all this minute, minute data. We understand it, and you've been keeping a surprise. But just so everybody out there kind of gets it. I mean, these are expenses that the town either incurred by virtue of staff doing things that were beyond overtime, whatever, and/or contracted services that were incurred. And, and the process that you're talking about now is trying to get reimbursement from emergency funds at the state or federal level.
Correct. For items that the town deems eligible, and, and we're trying to get them eligible through FEMA.
Right. So when you say close out or finish, that doesn't mean there's projects that haven't been done.
Oh, then everything, yes.
Everything that needed to be done has been done. Now it's kind of going down to the dollars and cents level.
Right. It's, it's closing out the case with FEMA.
Okay.
So that, so they're no longer looking at it, and we're, we no longer have it on our books either. So.
It's not like we've missed our responsibility, and it still needs to get done. Things have been done. Trying to get, trying to get paid.
Yes. This is, we're just trying to get reimbursement for items. And, you know, FEMA, we learned with COVID that, on one hand, FEMA is very generous in, in what they provide. And then, and then in the end, we find out there are a lot of exceptions. So we're weeding through the exceptions from all those, you know, prior storms. That's what we're weeding through.
I can only imagine what gets presented to them by some other towns.
But it's interesting. There was an exchange a week and a half ago on the most, one of the most recent storms. This is at the state level, right, where they were saying, how can you have someone driving a truck, running a chipper, and a, running a chainsaw at the same time? Because, you know, when someone gets dispatched, they bring, you know, two guys bring two trucks, bring a truck out with a chipper on the back of it, and they each have chainsaws. And you are eligible for reimbursement on the use of the equipment as well. So.
Right. And that was FEMA. That is exactly one of these, that, that is exactly part of this $300,000. So in order to get, like I was saying, something just went through last week. In order to get that through, we took the trucks out. It was the least cost. FEMA was going to fight us on it, and instead of going through hours and hours of, of fighting, you know, I made the executive decision to just take the trucks out and the rest, you know, made it through. We haven't gotten the money yet, but it's made it through to the, to the highest level. So those are the types of things.
Next time, you're going to have to walk to the site, that's all.
You're popular today.
I mean, you know, it's just not right.
And, 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 you know, I pleaded my case.
Yeah.
We probably could have continued to plead the case.
That's why I think we ought to bring, you know, other powers to be. Just give them an example of the absurdity of what's going on, and things that they have control. We have no control of it. They should. That's what they're here for. So, you know, maybe they should explain that to the powers that need, how absurd they look.
So if we weren't talking big dollars, you know, so, you know.
Okay. I think you're probably spending, we talked about it this morning.
Cost benefit, I went forward without the trucks.
Thank you.
So.
Let's, let's move on to facility projects. And this, this is accommodate a couple of items. Some work that may need to be done over at the Thane Building, or public work to accommodate the utilization of those offices by Park and Rec. We're going to get rid of the trailer that's sitting, that's, that is their office outside Park and Rec. This also includes money for some potential work on 52 Dr, including perhaps hiring or bringing consultant, an architectural consultant on board to determine if, in fact, the contentions that are being made, if there is historical significance to that building by the historic district. So we're going to engage a consultant, an architectural consultant. The replacement to the community center, 52 Church.
Oh, okay. Jump from driveway.
Yeah, there was, there was, there was a jump ship.
Yeah, I think you said 52 Dr. I thought you meant the Thane Building, this historic.
I would like to hear.
No, it's 52 Church. As you're as well aware, there's a contention with the Historic District Commission about preserving that, that building, which renders the property almost useless for the purpose that we had purchased it, which was additional parking for the community center. So. The transportation plan, the cross of the consultants, this is the Gulf and Safe Streets Task Force. This will enable them to do another demonstration project, too, relative to some of the side marks, as they come out of the final recommendation. This one is, we don't have anything definitive on it, but for expenditures yet, but it's with the anticipation that the consultant's recommendation is going to have a list of projects for us to complete for part of the Safe Streets. So this one is a little, is a little soft in terms of, we don't have a specific project yet, but we do know that there are going to be a list of projects that's come up that are going to be pretty significant for, for long, short, and long-term opportunities.
So this is for projects, or on top of the two, original $200,000 that we spent on the study?
No, this is for projects. This is for actually the, you know, demonstration projects that's coming out of it. So.
All right.
All right. Coastal resilience is pretty obvious. I will say that when we had our ratings review call for, prior to bond issuances this summer, and, and most recently, was it last week? Week and a half ago, right?
Yeah.
Week and a half ago. The agencies are very clear about talking about communities like ours having funds and having coastal resilience activities taking place. We got a bunch of credit for the coastal resilience plan that was implemented, so we're still in the road project. And the fact that we have only earmarked, this is in addition to the, we have 750,000 in there right now. So this brings, gets us to $1 billion, which is going to give us the opportunity to make some impacts on, on some of the coastal resilience challenges we're going to be facing. So they clearly, and Mary Jane can even talk to that as well, but, you know, did we share the, the ratings documents with everybody? I don't think we did. We should probably share with you.
I thought we did.
Did you guys get it?
So the rating agencies had two hot button items. I guess you want to call them coastal resiliency and cybersecurity. Those were the two additional, we've been talking to them about coastal resiliency, but they had them on their list this year. We actually had to add more to our official statement, explaining all that we do for coastal resiliency. It's something that the bond buyers are really looking at.
And then road projects.
Road projects. And, and pardon me, my computer, I think I'm not on Wi-Fi yet, so that's why I'm having problems. So I got my phone, so I could bring up my email, not so I could chat. So Janice has a number of road projects that, that $300,000 is for. Continued design of Goose Lane, the Clappard Hill Bridge Road, Clappard Hill Road Bridge Guide Rails and Parapet Repairs, which I'm afraid I don't know what that is. But it's a bridge project. And drainage and culvert improvements. Another 200, 200,000 of that is just drainage and culvert improvements throughout the town. So, so those, that $300,000 would be earmarked for those particular items.
I just had an interest, I just had a conversation, you know, I know our EDC, we're trying to work in coordination with Madison, and that was one of the subjects I brought up to, or as one of my old pet projects was, to, to, to start the process with the state of reopening the exit in Lungertown, because that would take care of 99% of Sagem. And, you know, it's just one of those things. You've got to start the process.
Goose Lane.
Get it on the list. And, you know, it's going to be five or 10 years before they would actually do anything, but the only way to get it done is to start it. And that would take care of so much of Goose Lane's issues. I mean, it's just the logic of them getting off there. Most of those people are Madison folks anyway.
Exactly. Heading, heading east.
You know, it was funny, I was just having a conversation with her, and I think, you know, if Madison and Guilford were to start the process, bring more pressure to bear, it just would be a benefit for both communities.
Yeah, Charlie, that's been an old saw of mine for years. I can't understand, you had half an exit in Madison at Exit 60, right? You know, one, one entrance and one exit for, for both Northbound and Southbound.
See, exit that makes, you know, it just, yeah.
So, yeah.
Goose Lane just doesn't have the real estate to make it a good exit.
It's challenging.
It's challenging. Yeah. It's like what they do with the rotary or the intersection of 91 and 95. They're trying to jam a square into a round spot. And it just, you know, just open your eyes, guys, to what's going on. And it just seems to me that we have an opportunity, the towns could work together to start the New Easyville Center. It's going to take years.
Well, I'll, I'll reach out to John Michael Parker in Madison, and Sean, and Christine. We also are engaged with the DLT in several, several projects right now, the least of which is the 146 Corridors Study slash Management Plan. Actually, we had a meeting on Thursday night with, with Deputy Director, Deputy Commissioner and his staff around Route 146. And so we're developing some relationships. We're trying not to be too forceful as we, as we demand what we want out of 146. But I also have, have a relationship with the Commissioner Joe Giuglietti, who actually says that he, as a kid, used to crab at that crabbing spot on Route 146. So.
I mean, we all love it. It could be so much better.
Exactly. But we'll, we'll, we'll bring that issue up about the Goose Lane exit. And then the last one is fund balance of science and
Yeah. So the last one, I kind of tacked on at the end, had a meeting with Tom Fillian the other day to go over the funds that he have left over from last year and moving forward. And he, he said, he says, oh, you're, you're missing my purchase order for Morton Salt on your list. I went on the computer, and it had been closed out last year. And there was 36,000, glasses on, whatever the next, $36,512 left on a $43,000 purchase order, which he had held for use this year. And miscommunication with his staff, it had been closed out. So I promised to come, I said, good timing. I'm going to the Board of Finance Monday, Monday. I tacked it on for this. So, so I'm looking to use surplus funds from last year's budget, as we had put some in at the last meeting, and so that, to make him whole on, on this purchase order, because he's anticipating to have a lot of difficulty getting salt, and is afraid that the prices are really going to skyrocket this year. So.
So 36 is just a rollover, not the total that he anticipates having.
No, he has money in this year's budget, but this was money left over in a purchase order that he knew he had last year, and he had anticipated.
Does that mean he's anticipating almost double the cost?
I know. That's a good question. Last year was a weird year, though, because I don't think there was
Well, that's, there's, there's a couple of things that have happened. One is there, there's only, one of the previous salt suppliers was out of London. They have closed that pier, that facility down. I don't know if you read anything about what the state's doing down there. They're giving that pier to, for, to develop or for economic development. So there's one major provider that is no longer available, and that's where we were buying most of our salt. Morton and the state, Morton won the state's bid for, one of the state bids for municipalities. The other problem is the, the only other facility, I think, is up in the greater Hartford area that is supplying salt. So every community right now is running into the same issue with the cost problems and availability. So, and you know, when availability gets limited, the market forces drive the prices up, so.
It's not a state contract?
It is obviously a contract.
And it's not fixed?
No, it's not fixed.
One of my thoughts now that we own some more property down there is stockpiling a little extra.
Well, we need to build another hoop house, which is, we've had some discussions about building a couple of temporary storage things on that, on that side of the property alongside driveway. But we would need to have some kind of weatherproofed.
Bet that building was just a great big empty warehouse.
What's that?
Bet that building was effectively a big empty trolley barn.
No, it's, it's got offices in it. It's got restroom facilities. It's got
Whatever. Okay.
Well, one of the challenges is that Got railroad tracks running through the middle of it.
And there's a big crane in it or something. Isn't there a big piece of equipment that?
Yeah, but that's all. Truck can still go in there and dump, you know, temporarily. Well, you're on it. Okay. I just think that, you know, we, we have the money, and if they anticipate inflation taking over, this might be a stockpile opportunity.
Well, I do know that they fill, what they, what they could get from our inventory, they did fill in there, put, put into the, our current storage facility. So the problem now is getting material.
Okay.
All right. So questions or comments on those? I think it still leaves us with, you know, over what, 1 point? Yeah, 1.2 million, over our threshold target. And these are projects that are going to get done. And these are projects that are going to get done eventually anyway. So rather than, you know, include those in a bond issuance or something at some point, uh, in, in the future, or they'd be in the capital budget. This is an opportunity for us to, to, to ease the burden on the taxpayers on a longer term basis. With, with, with taxpayer funds that have already been satisfied, so.
Can I ask, were there projects that you considered putting in here and decided not to? And, and did the department heads and the commissions have a chance to kind of weigh in? Just to make sure, I mean, I have no problem with any of this, but I don't, wouldn't necessarily know if there was something else.
The department heads definitely weighed in, that's why I quoted from Janice's email to me because I didn't want to.
All, all of them.
Yes, yeah.
There, there was, there's some coming from Park and Rec, which you're going to see a little bit later.
In a different manner.
So we moved some of that stuff that way, uh, for the longer term stuff. Uh, but at this point, this seems to satisfy, um, most of the requests that we have at this point. Remember Fire Department has got, uh, you know, got the training facility coming online, which was approved at the referendum.
Right, it's already, it's already a bonded project, so, yeah.
And a new garage base, um, also, uh, are in that same thing. So, um, we're, we're slowly getting there. And you also realize we just purchased two, uh, two new big dump trucks for Public Works. That was a $550,000, uh, item that was approved at, uh, at referendum, so. So, like, for, for, for now, you know, the needs continue to emerge. You know, and, and it's a good point, let's pull out our five-year capital plan. And, you know, we've got another 1.2 million, maybe we start chipping away at someone else's. But in effect, what that does, even though we're not designating it as such, uh, we've basically built ourselves a capital fund, uh, capital reserve fund. Uh, if you can assume that other 1.2 million dollars is there for those kind of projects if we need.
Right, and these, and these are projects, um, that are on the table that would have been coming to you for capital requests, so just, you know, do it that way.
All right, are we comfortable with it?
Oh, good.
Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to, uh?
Some, some will.
Second, second. Any further comments or questions? We try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, recusals, or you know, motion carries, thank you very much. Department heads are, will be thanking you as well. Okay, uh, medical fund balance transfer, Mary Jane.
Uh, so at the end of fiscal year 2021, um, our fund balance is approximately 6.9 million dollars, again, unaudited. I'd like to request that at least three months of expenses, um, be kept. Normally I would come and say two. Um, but as my memo says, you know, we, we still don't know the effect of COVID, so I would not, um, you know, like to take too much out of the fund. I want to be sure that we have more than enough in there to cover, um, anything that, that might come up. Uh, we do have the, um, incurred but not, um, not covered yet, which leaves us remaining balance, um, of 3.3 million dollars, um, in, in the fund at this point. So we're, we, we'd like to request 1.5 million be moved from, uh, the Internal Service Fund, which is our medical fund, uh, from their fund balance, um, into the OPEB, uh, trust fund. And, uh, that would reduce our future liabilities and reduce the requests that the town and the Board of Ed will start to come, um, ahead with budgets in fiscal year 23. I did ask our actuarial firm if they could provide me with, um, an idea of what that savings would be. And, um, I was unable to get that, um, for this meeting. Um, but, uh, rest assured that that will reduce those numbers, obviously, um, moving forward. At, just that as an aside, I will say that on September 1, we opened the OPEB trust fund and, uh, deposited 1.2 million dollars into it. Just this past Fri- Thursday or Friday, uh, we determined where the, uh, money will be invested. And we made that request to Wells Fargo to invest, um, that money. We, we chose to invest all of it, uh, right away to get that money working for us. Um, and if, if this 1.5 million or any amount, um, that is approved by both boards, uh, should come to fruition, the decision is to, uh, move it immediately as well and get that money. The sooner that money's working for us, um, the better we, we'll be in the future, so.
Right, and, and originally, I think we were talking about a billion dollars, that's what we did last year. Uh, but we decided, and Mary Jane and I said, given the size of it, of the fund, that 6.9 million, taking that out, brings us back down to 5.4, which, uh, clearly is way in excess of what, uh, is being recommended to keep in there for, uh, reserve. So, and, and again, let's not underestimate the impact that this could have as we, as we move forward. We're going to have a new, next year, we're going to have a new budget line, uh, for, uh, for OPEB payments. So we're going to need to start to contribute, uh, by infusing more cash in upfront that is going to diminish, uh, over the next several years, what we have to put into, into it on an operating basis, so.
Yeah, and I'll just add, um, that the money that we're putting in is being split between the town and the Board of Ed. But we are keeping, uh, just like our pension fund, it's one fund, but we can tell you how much is in the police fund, how much is, um, the same thing is in OPEB, we can tell you how much is in the Board of Ed and how much is in the town. And the agreement that I made with, um, the business manager over there is all the money is going in percentage of liability. So as fair, the, the fairest way we could come up with, um, for that money to be split. Um, both of us are putting into the medical fund based on a similar calculation. Um, and so the money going into OPEB is being split between the two entities, um, based on, uh, percentage of liability. So, um, both sides seem to be in agreement with that, it, it, you know, um, the Board of Ed and the, and the town. Uh, Linda and I made the recommendations to both Matt and, and Paul Freeman and, uh, that, uh, was how, um, it was decided to, to do that, so.
So everyone's happy with this?
Yes, yes, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so a real joint effort between, um, the, the town and the board and, and, and a lot of people. A lot of people putting this all together, so.
This was probably covered earlier, but just to refresh my memory, you, the pension committee oversees the pension. There isn't a separate committee for the OPEB, right?
No, uh, the ordinance that we approved names the pension committee as the OPEB board.
Yeah.
So when the pension committee meets, they actually have two agendas. They start with the pension meeting, they adjourn that meeting. They open, um, the OPEB meeting and they have similar, um, yeah, yeah, similar items on the agenda. It was great, two of our OPEB trustees attended our last meeting, which is not a requirement, so, you know, not necessarily at all, but, um, did just to see, um, how the process was working. Um, and so that, you know, certainly is, helps with the transparency on my end, that, you know, so, uh, that was great.
Bob Hart is one of those trustees, he traditionally, uh, participates in the pension.
In pension anyway, so.
Because he served on that board for quite a number of years. But I do know Bob is supportive of continuing to fund the OPEB in this, uh, in this manner. So, uh, we're hoping this, this evening, uh, we'll meet with the same level of acceptance as we have this, uh, seemingly this morning. Okay, uh, anything else? Is there a motion to, uh, recommend, uh, to the Board of Finance that 1.5 million be transferred to the OPEB trust fund?
I'd like to make that motion. I'm very pleased that we've done this.
Second, thank you.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries, thank you. Mary Jane is the happiest person in town about this, uh, project being up and running, so.
So good, after talking about it for so many years.
I know, it was a great, September 1st was a great day. That money actually went in.
Thank you very much for your, your tenacity on getting this, getting, getting us to do what we should have done, so.
So what, what does this bring about, two and a half?
Uh, 3.7.
1.7.
Seven.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Great start.
All right.
Okay.
I'll be back up for ARPA, I guess, but I.
Sure, if you don't participate, that's right, there we go. Just to put that in perspective, the goal of that fund is what, 20?
I, I think our, our liability is going to drop. It was at, what, 35 when it's anticipated, because of what we're doing.
It's at 28 right now, so, um, it's being the less.
We don't have to fund it 100%.
No, we get to our 75, 80.
But I know our goal is in that 20 range.
Yeah, it would be, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll know a lot more a year from now, um, after we have our audit.
Exactly, at this rate, that's fair enough.
The audit for 2021 still represents non, non-funding. Um, but our audit for July, I mean, for, for June 30, 2022 will be a true indication of, of where we're headed. But obviously, Milliman and our consultants will, will let us know way before that, but.
At this point, we'll let the taxpayers do half and the market do it.
Yeah, that's right. Rather than the taxpayers do it all, which is what we've been doing.
That's, that's the, that's the entire reason for the, the trust.
Oh, it's great.
Great, I said, we'll see you in 10 years.
All right, uh, item five, Board of Ed Director of Facilities, Cliff Gurnum, thanks for being patient through our earlier discussions, Cliff. Um, 5 dot 1, discuss and take possible action on change order number six for the Baldwin HVAC phase two project. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, so change order six is comprised of a bunch of, um, I'd say relatively minor changes that, uh, created this, uh, change order. In the past, where we've done renovation projects, where we've created new classrooms, uh, modified the main office, things of that nature. The HVAC system may not have been changed to really, um, be utilized or be efficient in those areas. So, uh, we are making some changes to various, um, uh, zoning, uh, such as the main office, room 225, uh, the hallway. We, we're going to add a BAV so that we have better control in the hallway, which will also balance out the main office. So, uh, uh, what else do we do here? Um, oh yeah, and then there was a couple of new items. For example, we installed a manual bypass control valve for the, uh, chiller. Evidently, um, when the building goes dormant and we don't have the loads, the chiller still needs a certain amount of water to go through it in order to keep operating. So, uh, presently, we manually open and close that valve. That valve was on the roof, uh, in the middle of the system. So we're going to automate that, so that's going to be done as well. So, these, uh, minor changes were all reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and by our engineer. And, uh, were approved to move, uh, forward, uh, recommended to move forward by, uh, the, the Building Committee and award the work to Save More Cooling and Heating in the amount of $75,175.23.
Cliff, is there a motion? Yeah, second, second. Any comments or questions for Cliff? Okay, um, let me try your minds, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on additional services for commissioning for the HVAC system at Baldwin Middle School. Cliff?
So, uh, as you know, we've awarded the commissioning, uh, to colleagues from Madison to commission the system at Baldwin. We are having some issues with two air handlers, uh, which lead to obviously downstream issues in multiple classrooms. So we felt it was in our best interest to fully test those two air handlers and all the associated spaces so we could fully understand, uh, what is causing the problem and where the problem is so that we can have it corrected as, uh, part of the project and before we close out, uh, our contract with, uh, Save More and the engineers. So the additional testing, uh, is in the amount of $7,740.
Thank you, Cliff. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Yeah, is there a second?
I'll second, second.
Charlie?
I mean, this was, I mean, it's eight, $7,700, but, I mean, we're hiring people to test a new installation.
Cliff?
Uh, correct. Uh, we are at the point in the project where both the contractor and the engineer are having a disagreement, uh, in the cause of the problem.
If, if they're having a disagreement, it isn't operating according to specs, why are we paying to prove that?
Because, I, I guess the way we're looking at it is we're going to pay to prove it and then determining the outcome. We may be able to recoup our costs. But in order to really determine the issue, uh, and not, uh, sit here already after about three months of finger pointing, uh, on what the cause of the problem is. Uh, we felt it best to bring in a, a third-party commissioning agent to help us determine the true cause. Otherwise, we're going to be sitting here, um, pointing fingers back and forth between the contractor and the engineers.
Okay, do you think, all right, after we're going to build up some evidence for our side of the case, is there enough money left in the contract with either the engineers or the contractor that we will be able to recoup this additional cost?
I believe so. Uh, I believe that, uh, depending on what the cause is, uh, the.
Or cause isn't going to be our fault.
No, exactly, but, but what I'm saying, depending on who is at fault for the issue would be, would, would help determine us who we're going to go back and ask for the, uh, recuperating these costs.
Okay, we have enough money outstanding that.
Correct, yes.
We ask and they want.
So we have enough, we have, we have enough retainage on the project to, to hold, yes.
All right.
Put that one in the back of my.
Yeah, and, and, and obviously, this is a precursor to having our lawyers involved, uh, and, and, and settle uh, it through some legal proceeding, which probably costs a little more than 7700, so this is, I think, an appropriate interim step. And knowing that was.
Yeah, you gotta build, you gotta build your evidence, it's just unfortunate, and I certainly think that this would go into the file of these engineers and contractors.
I have just a curiosity question, Cliff. I like to read the Standing Building Committee minutes. Normally, if I get a chance beforehand, just to see what their thinking is and their logic. And I'm seeing here that they voted by email, which I didn't.
Correct.
Which like.
We're trying.
Yeah, why was that?
Sorry, uh, we're trying to expedite getting approval, uh, for this work uh, because obviously, this is presently affecting the, uh, climate within the school. So we've been trying to move this along as quickly as possible so that we can get that resolved, uh, that's why we did that.
All right, thank you.
If, once we prove whatever this issue is, or have evidence or whatever it is, is there more work in that could potentially be required?
There will definitely be more work because we have to obviously correct the problem. The amount of work will be tur- be determined by what the actual cause is. So, uh, if we ca- determine that the piece of equipment is, say, mis-sized, um, then that piece would have to be removed and a new piece installed with, of the proper size. What's that?
At whose cost?
That would be at the engineer's cost because they mis-design the system inadequately to handle our loads.
Either you know insurance more than likely.
So if it's ductwork issues, uh, and we have to change the ductwork, again, it goes back to, uh, was it the contractor that misinstalled the ductwork of the wrong size or, um, configuration? Or was it specked by the engineer, uh, as the wrong size? So there's a lot to be determined here, and once we determine that, yes, there will be, uh, potentially some, uh, cost to, to correct that problem.
But not necessarily cost to the town.
Correct, I would be, uh, I'm assuming myself and the Standing Building Committee, we would be pushing hard to recoup or, or put those costs onto one of the other two parties.
Okay, more to go.
All right, thanks, Cliff.
I moved it already.
Yeah, we have. Try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Those abstaining, recusals, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, next up, is item three, discuss and take possible action on change order number two for the Cox HVAC replacement, uh, project. Cliff?
Yes, so as you know, we went out to bid for the HVAC project at Cox. Um, after, uh, a bunch of, uh, schedule review and, um, delays as far as the potential of getting any equipment on time. Um, it was determined it would be in the best interest of the district to wait on that project and to push it until the summer of 2022. So, uh, we went back to the contractor and, uh, we have, uh, worked with them to determine what the cost would be to, to delay the year. Uh, this has been a process that the, uh, town, uh, attorney's been involved with, uh, to, to get to this point. So, uh, we're looking at, uh, awarding the change order, which, again, the, the cost is really based upon prevailing wage and the anticipated increase in prevailing wage for next year. Um, and again, if that's less, then so be it, we'll be able to reduce this. But, uh, it was approved as a not to exceed $38,061.79. And again, if that's less, then so be it. We'll be able to reduce this. But it was approved as a not to exceed thirty eight thousand, sixty one dollars and seventy nine cents.
Is there a motion?
Some.
A second. Cliff made a point. Both our construction attorney, Jeff Donatrio, as well as Pete Barrett were involved in negotiations on this. And it was a negotiation between ourselves and the contractor. Contractor couldn't get the equipment in time to meet the original deadlines. We all know about supply chain issues related to COVID. So this was the, we were, at one point, we contemplated going back out to bid to see if we could something different, but the cost associated with that would, and the timeline delays on that would have been intolerable. So this was a negotiated settlement between the town, signed off by Jeff Donatrio and also by Peter Barrett.
Do we have a clause in our bid documents regarding availability of parts and equipment? Cliff, we don't. I suggest that we discuss it with our attorney about getting it in.
Into there. I'll, I'll work with Pete on that. See, it's almost like a force majeure, you know, which I know we have.
You know, I can appreciate you can get the, you know, wording into a bid document that would benefit either side. And I don't really have a problem with that, except we might have saved some attorney fees if that was part of the document.
Okay, anything further? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstaining, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on change order number two for the Gilbert High School track and field project. Cliff?
So this change order two is composed of four different proposed change orders. These were all reviewed by the engineers as well as Park and Rec and the Standing Bill, Standing Fields Committee, as well as the Standing Building Committee. So the, the first proposed change order, we're looking at replacing natural turf with the actual landscape turf on the two tiers in front of the bleachers. The reason for this was having natural turf there was a real challenge with the maintenance as far as trying to mow it, weed whack it around the fences. And then the wear and tear because it's a highly used area for the spectators. To maintain natural grass, it was going to be very difficult. We'd have to probably do irrigation, fertilize that type of thing. So it'll cut down significantly in the maintenance and wear and tears. And so that was the first one. The second one is a guardrail for the upper terrace. So the board of ed has gone ahead and replaced the sidewalk to the bleachers. And part of that, they tore out the guardrail. And then we've been working with the stadium project to integrate the new sidewalk into the terrace. So as part of that, all parties had agreed that although this railing is not required by code, it makes sense for the safety of spectators, especially somebody in a possible wheelchair to prevent them from going down the embankment, you know, and then over off one of these tiers onto a lower level. So that was number two. Number three, we're doing additional paving and some fence to finish the security. The athletic director has requested to secure three hundred and sixty degrees around the track and field to prevent spectators from getting out there. So we added some additional fence and paving for that. And then lastly, there was a escalation fee for the turf itself. Unfortunately, the turf manufacturer would not hold the P O price due to multiple escalations. This was reviewed multiple times by the standing building committee. We talked to the contractor in length about this. It was something that we we obviously didn't like, I guess is what to put it, but we felt that it was a reasonable request at the end of the day. So that was the last piece of the P C O. So the total cost is one hundred and twenty one thousand, sixty three dollars and twenty cents. We have over two hundred thousand left in the balance of the contingency for the project.
Is there a motion for special purpose?
Some.
And second, 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 questions?
What was the number that what was the number you thought it should be?
Oh, for the additional escalation? Well, obviously, we, we didn't, when it came to us at first, we the, the committee actually declined it, feeling that it should be part of the contract, but
The question is what material? Why not twenty seven thousand dollars? And how much do we have budgeted?
Oh, it was an additional material, just the additional cost for the turf itself. So the cost of the turf itself went up twenty seven thousand dollars per the manufacturer. After, that's after we had submitted the P Os. So the
And we Part of the original contract.
Right. So, so the, the contractor was able to prove that even though he was diligent in submitting his P O very shortly after we signed our contracts, the manufacturer will not uphold that contract and P O price due to the changes in the cost of materials. So there was no upcharge on this from our contractor. It was straight pass through of the additional cost for the turf.
We're talking the actual carpet itself?
Yeah, correct.
And you're comfortable that when the contractor originally got the original price for the materials that they did their due diligence, they had a current quote. I mean, they did everything right.
Correct. Yes, they did. It's just because of these abnormal circumstances. And I'm getting proposals that used to be thirty day, sixty day, or ninety day guarantee on, on the price is now down to three days. If I don't respond and lock it in with those three days, the price is invalid. It's, it's that quick now.
What about the issue of you thinking that this was originally part of the original deal?
Correct. It's just, it's just the, the cost of inflation on materials.
I'm talking about the inflation. I'm talking, I thought you said that you thought this was included in the original contract.
It was. And that's why we originally thought under the contract that it should, again, we're not gaining material. It's just strictly increased cost due to inflation on the materials in the last three months.
So the contract
It's just, it's something obviously that we had to vet very thoroughly because we didn't feel comfortable in such a short term having an increase on something that we had bid out only a few months ago.
Cliff, how much was the cost of the turf before the twenty seven is added on to it? I mean, the material.
Right. I'd have to actually go back and dig through. I'm not sure if they gave us an itemized price on the turf itself. I think the bid itself was an overall bid for the entire project. So I would have to go back and ask, but it's a, it's a very large amount, like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this increase based upon that is very minimal.
And I have a couple of questions about the sixty four thousand dollar line item that you have here. So this is landscaping around the bleachers at the stadium field, right?
Correct, in front of the bleachers.
Okay. And, and there's been grass there since Bryce Warne makers? Eighteen, eighteen oh five.
Correct.
They have that football. But they dramatically changed the look of that. There are two terraces now. It used to be just one hillside that went down.
An interestingly dangerous slope.
Yeah, exactly. So this is, there are, there are two tiers, one right up against the track and that's the fencing, there's fencing along the front there. And then there's, you know, I don't know, it was about eight to ten feet wide terrace.
Correct.
Then there's a, you know, stone retaining wall that goes up to a second terrace. That's another eight to ten feet wide. And then, as Cliff mentioned, the board of ed did the concrete sidewalk all along in front of the bleachers. So that's what it now looks like as opposed to just that sloping hill where all the kids and, you know, parents who are standing on, usually on the, on the tarmac and then kids all along the fence lines. Although this will create the two different viewing platforms in addition to the, to the stadium seats. Right? You can tell like Yeah, I imagine. I hope so. I mean, I believe when I saw this stuff coming. That's just, and, and what, so what infill is going to be on that? That's what I'm talking about with turf as opposed to grass because you can't getting overs into those. Yeah, no, no, I understand. Are we going to have a question about rubber infill versus sand infill?
No, it's, it's actually, it's not like the carpet that we have actually on the turf itself because that was almost double the price. So it's more of a landscape turf. There's a little bit of sand that holds it in. So there's no rubber or anything is, but it doesn't like the field does as far as a large amount of infill.
So this is closer to what they, they used to call astroturf in the old days.
Correct. Yep.
So it's cheaper.
Correct.
I'm still not certain.
Plastic and plastic bags.
Yeah.
Just to put it in perspective.
And it's on both, in both of these terraces?
Correct.
And there's no practical way of just doing one terrace and suppose keep the other with grass? I mean,
Because once you start using a weed whacker and throwing grass onto your turf or onto the field, you know, the track, you didn't have to figure out how to clean everything up. It becomes a nightmare.
Okay.
Yeah, just one more, Cliff. Are, are we far enough along? Do you think that you have a pretty good feel for whether there might be anything else coming that would be an additional change? I know it's hard to say, but we eat into the extra pretty well here.
I believe there, there are three more minor change orders coming. Two of them are about thirty six hundred dollars or in that range. And then there's one that's, I think, about ten thousand, which had to deal with additional jackhammering of additional rock in various locations. And then I believe that's it. Those would be our last three.
Okay, good.
Really trying to tighten up the project and close it out, you know, next month.
Yeah, good. Good. Thank you.
There was, there was, there was some hope that they'd be able to play a home football game on that sometime in October.
Yeah, the, our completion date right now is really the first week in November or last week in October, depending how the weather goes over the next couple of weeks and how fast they can get the track put in. So if you go up there now, the, the turf is being laid and then they'll, they'll start gluing it all together and stretching it out.
Where are they playing now? The upper field? Actually, they played their first home game at North Branford High School. North Branford was generous enough. They were away that, that night. And I asked, I was actually, somebody may know, I still do the chains, some are sideline chains. So I got to do the chains at North Branford High School for Gilbert High School home football game. Fantastic. All right. So
All right.
Anything further on this? It's a complicated project. Appreciate these things. I understand generally that how grass would be difficult in that location. It's just, it strikes me, not to complain, just for complaining sake, but that strikes me as something that should have kind of been anticipated before we got to this point.
Again, it, it could have been reviewed. I know, I guess it might have been oversight by, it, it's more of an owner's, you know, request versus a project.
Sorry.
Yeah, flaw. Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Well, Cliff, these are all challenging projects. And, you know, I know we put you through the, the bill on some of these questions, but we, we appreciate the work you're doing. And we understand the challenges with many of these projects. So all right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, abstaining, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks. Okay, item six, discuss and take possible action on the initial distribution of American Rescue Act, otherwise known as ARPA funds. I want to start with the initial funding round, the ones that document that says American Rescue Plan funding, initial funding round. These are, these are expenditures that we've already incurred based on, and let me, let me just back off for a second here for, for a greater explanation. The way that I have been approaching this and many of my peers around the state breaking this into phases. And I'm calling it, it's basically three phases as we're looking at. Phase one are direct government expenses, economic development and parts enhancements, all three of which are clear, clearly delineated in the, in the initial guidance and guidelines from the treasury as allowable expenses. There is a fourth one that we can talk about later, and that is revenue loss, replacing revenue loss. But what that does is that just drives money back into your fund balance. And there's, there, there's, there are some numbers on this that are pretty interesting, which we're, we're working through. But nonetheless, government, economic development and, and parks. So these are the programs, this initial funding round, these are the programs to be initiated this spring in anticipation of the, the needs and challenges in our community, largely around, there, there were two of them that are summer enrichment programs, which I think you may recall hearing that the, the state was, state was pushing, particularly as it related to the educational impact that kids had during the school year and then, and then, and then doing something for summer camps. So Youth and Family Services ran a summer enrichment camp this year, thirty two campers, three, you know, over three weeks, admission fees and programming, including transportation. And what we have done here is we're asking to move the funding for two years as we anticipate doing that same program again next summer. And that's allowable. We are, we can spend this money up through twenty twenty six, December of twenty twenty six. So this is allocating for the expenses we've already incurred and next year. The Youth and Family Services clinical staffing continues to, to, to be pushed to the limit. They are now, they now have caseloads, numbers up over a hundred, a hundred and ten, which is nearly double what they had before. So this is a part-time clinician who are moving to full time and will be able to increase their caseload by thirty three percent. This is salary and benefits differential at forty nine thousand. That also is over two years. What I want to make clear is there's a note at the bottom of that sheet is that this, these positions are to be evaluated in the twenty twenty six, twenty twenty five budget, I think it's going to be, right?
It says twenty three, twenty four here.
Yeah, twenty three, twenty four, sorry. That we, we, we will determine whether or not the need is still there to continue to keep staffing at this levels. But clearly, mental health was one of those areas that was a focus of the American Rescue Plan, particularly for children. So and then the same thing applies for the juvenile case board manager. The only difference there is that individual currently works for us but does casework on a fee for a, a, a fee basis. So we don't have that, we didn't have definitive numbers on what the impact is going to be in terms of the reduced expenditures on the fees for those services. But this one, this, this, this also, juvenile review case, case manager also handles truancy. That's the, that is, that's one of the primaries. And we actually get a six thousand dollar grant from the state to, or I think it's the state to, to manage the truancy program. So that, 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 that role now is a full-time role and caseload is going to also be able to be increased as well as decreased expenditure for the fee-based consultation services. The next one is the Park and Rec Summer Enrichment Program.
May I just ask, do you want me to hold my questions till you get through?
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Okay. So that's a hundred and five thousand dollars, but that's against some money that we already spend or that's new money on top of?
That's new money. This is the anticipated expense. But what we don't have a number on is what are the fees that we are currently paying for that individual to do, to, to casework?
So would, would it be minus those fees that we don't know what they are?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then we've been accounting this. We, we have to keep strict accounting records on each, each area that we spend the money in. So Mary Jane has got a pretty tall project in front of her because we have to report these out to the treasury. So the good news is we're going to miss the October window because we aren't actually going to spend the money or move the money until such time. So we'll, 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 we'll get the next report.
So just, just to be, just to be clear, this is roughly a fifty two thousand dollar salary at, per annum?
Well, it's forty nine, I think, but it's offset by the grant of six thousand. So it's really forty three. And then we loaded a factor in for
Okay, all right. Okay.
The Park and Rec Summer Enrichment Program, this was conducted, this was a, a great program that went on this summer. It was, it was three entities involved. Board of Education provided classroom, literally classroom instruction in the mornings. Youth and Family Services and, and Park and Rec did outdoor recreation after, after the morning classes were done. So this program ran throughout the summer. Our cost for Park and Rec was only about twenty seven hundred dollars. All right. And that was, that, that was largely a programming staff. So the Park and Rec Summer Program, which was brand new this summer. The Park and Rec Summer Program, which was brand new this summer, get out, way out for additional bus needed to, for COVID protocols. We, this is, we couldn't put as many kids on the bus when we sent them out to, you know, the areas around the state. The Park and Rec Cultural Economic Development Programs, summer concerts on the beach, summer concerts on the green, and fireworks. These are all eligible, eligible expenditures. These are things we're moving forward with. Actually, we didn't have fireworks in the budget this year. We're going to do, try to figure out how to raise that. But anything that allowed, that encouraged people to participate in outdoor activities was allowable, is an allowable expense. And then Park and Rec Program Fees, this is the one that's a little, little kind of squishy, but because of the impact of COVID, they've not been able to run their programs. And Mary Jane has identified, and Rick have identified about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in revenue loss, net revenue loss for the Board of Educate, not Board of Educate, the Park and Rec Commission's programs over. What's the period of time that you used on that?
It's comparing fiscal twenty to fiscal nineteen.
Thank you. All right, so that number comes up, you know, the total of about four hundred and seventy-three thousand. We have in a reserve account right now, three point two, three point two million dollars that had been dropped down from the state, through the state from the federal government. So that's sitting in a reserve account. And we're looking to allocate the first four hundred and seventy-three thousand of that to, to this, these programs. So comments or questions or concerns relative to it?
All seems sensible. Obviously, Park and Rec's taken a, you know, very difficult hit during the COVID. And they've continued to do their absolute best and great.
Okay.
And you, needless to say, Youth and Family Services, very stressful time.
What I'd, what I'd like to do, even though there is some contention that these are grant monies and don't need the full approval of the Board of Finance, we're gonna be bringing these to the Board of Finance this evening, so I'd love to have your recommendation on this. So is there a motion for this, this round?
I'll make it.
Second, any further questions?
We can continue to come up with ideas. This is the end of it.
Right.
All right, good.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most abstaining, refusing, hearing non-motion carries. Okay.
You're very pointed.
Exactly. Phase two, I'd like to make the tourism and economic development, I guess. And this was vetted, actually, this is one of the early efforts. I had Sherry work with the Economic Development Commission to come up with a series of opportunities to be spending money on. New Christmas tree lights, as you know, every, you know, the Economic Development Commission and the Shoreline Chamber hosts that event on, on, was it the Friday, the Friday after Thanksgiving or two Fridays after Thanksgiving?
Are we going to have it this year?
We are gonna have it.
Because I've been asked that by several entities, so.
We're gonna have it this year. Hopefully, we have new lights for, for the tree, for that purpose.
Okay.
And again, these are all, these are all things that are related to economic development and helping draw people into town, into the businesses. So clearly, this can work. The Welcome Sign Project, this has been a tremendous effort, a grassroots effort. The Economic Development Commission, I hope you've seen the signs, the signs that are right off the highway. We've got, I think they raised enough funds to pay for four of the six. We're gonna be funding the balance of those, of those, those signs. And then there are wayfaring signs too. There are gonna be other signs, once you get off the highway, to direct you into the downtown area or to the Marina area or to tourist, you know, tourism, so. We're looking at about twenty, twenty thousand dollars to complement the thirty thousand that they have raised so far in that project. The Guilford Performing Arts Festival takes place this weekend. You know, in previous years, that has drawn a significant, they had last, two years ago, I think they had some sixty or seventy programs that took place in a variety of areas around town. So many of them were in businesses. In fact, I think the Arthur Murray Dance Studio hosted at least half a dozen of them, so. And this, this is an ability to help them with their fundraising because they've been impacted by COVID themselves. So originally, they had been looking for fifteen thousand, but in discussions with them, they were more successful in their independent fundraising, so five thousand is what they're asking for. The Guilford Fair Parade is one of those that we're gonna take out of this number. I talked with Dee Jacobs this, this week, actually Saturday. And she said, we don't need the twenty-five hundred. We wound up with enough fundraising, public fundraising. And as you recall, we put the, now have a commission because it's not the Rotary, we have a committee that does it. So kudos to them. So we're not gonna need that twenty-five hundred in, in, in there. This is an interesting concept, beautification grants to businesses. The concept is to make a thousand dollar grants available for them to spruce up the external improvements to the.
I think that's a great idea. Yes, I think that's a great idea.
Give Sherry a lot of credit for that one.
I just want to go back to the parade for one second. The Rotary's no longer managing it, but the Rotary continues to make a contribution financially and also with the Marshals. I just want to be sure because I think there was some discussion that made the Rotary sound like bad guys and bad girls, but we're not. I'm speaking as a Rotarian right now, not a selectman.
That's a good point.
The next one is advertising campaign website and mobile app. This obviously is gonna be a big expense, but this is, this is to, this is to take a real professional approach at doing digital advertising, digital marketing, building a economic development website, which would be, you know, accessible from our website that's currently being built for our purposes. And again, these, you know, these, these numbers are placeholder numbers at this point. We think that's, that's probably more than enough to, to, uh, what needs to be done there, so. So any comments or questions or concerns with any of those?
You had a motion on this one, do you?
A second.
Second, oh, no, let me do it.
Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Most abstaining, refusing, hearing non-motion carries. Okay, this one is, this one is a little bigger, obviously, and this is the parks enhancements. So let me just walk through them and we can assign some level of priority to each one of these. I'm not anticipating that we were gonna approve all of these. There are some, there are some estimates here that we still don't have, but I, I think I'd like conceptually, well, conceptually approve these moving forward. But Jacob's Beach Improvements, and again, just let me back up, Parks Enhancements is a clear-cut category in the ARPA funding guidelines to allow, to draw, draw people out into the community, which we found happened throughout COVID because they
Could be outside.
Had to be outside, so. So the splash pad and expanded parking with, with a guardrail around it, it's a hundred and eighty-three thousand. As, as we all know, they have been decimated by COVID in terms of their independent fundraising capacity over the past couple of, you know, it's almost two years now, it's eighteen months, right? And then replacing the place game, that's a pretty big number and it's an awful round number. And I, I'm not convinced that that, that number is completely vetted at this point. Next would be tennis and basketball courts, because as you know, we're gonna lose the tennis, the basketball courts over at the Emergency Services Complex when the new four-bay garage goes in over that area. So there's an idea to put those up at Adams Tennis Courts. And then, as well as the, as the model to reconstruct the, excuse me, the Adams Tennis Courts in addition to the basketball courts up at Bittner. And those prices are, are, are pretty significant.
So the, the proposal is that the basketball courts will no longer be on the police fire complex, but two new courts will be added at Bittner? Yeah, so we won't lose them, we'll move them.
We'll move them, exactly. That's the point.
They'll move down by Adams or anywhere.
Adams is the issue.
I'd just like to make two points for the, for the record. These items, not all of these items have gone through the Park and Rec Committee.
Right.
So that's one thing. So, you know, they're still on the drawing board and I'd just like to, Matt made reference to the numbers. Rick did speak to contractors and people in the know from any, which is where you receive these numbers, but they're obviously not final numbers, but they are as good as we could get at, at this point. So I just wanted to, you know, the numbers just aren't, you know.
These are, these are best estimates.
The concept in this general ballpark of these dollars, we're gonna get specific proposals.
Exactly, and, and, right. And everything will go through the Park and Rec Commission and, and they may have a priority of how they'd like to do things as well to, to discuss with you, so.
And, and just because we're moving today doesn't mean every one of these things is necessarily gonna happen. It's gotta go through the, the.
Everything still has to go through the, the same process we would for any type of.
Thanks, Mary Jane.
On that vein, I would, you know, consider, you know, when Park and Rec, or you can have the discussion with department heads, but I would consider Long Hill Park and Adams for additional. I am just always surprised every time I have to go to the firehouse or police station, how used those basketball courts are. Getting on the highway, even in the wintertime, the lights on, it is remarkable how I, I find it remarkable how much, maybe I don't go by the other courts as much, but it's like they get a lot of use and I would think nearby, I mean, Bittner is a little bit of a ride for the downtown.
But, you know, it's amazing, I still, I've been up to Bittner several times. Kids are still skateboarding up there on a skateboard.
It's incredible how many people are there. That's also used more than you would imagine. Try to walk on the trails and while you hear that, you wonder what's going on.
Now you're gonna hear another noise because the pickleball court's gotta be up there as well.
The pickets are, oh, pickleball, yeah.
But you make a point that Long, Long Hill Field would be a nice location if there's area there to do that, but a little closer to.
Yeah, I just think, you know, something to south of the town.
Yeah. I, I love the idea that it's at the public safety.
I know.
I did, I did too. I did too.
I mean, with, with additional funding, is there any creative way that we wouldn't, we wouldn't have considered?
Yeah, we're, we're sort of landlocked.
Tennis court?
And actually, full disclosure, we're gonna, we may have some issues with the inland wetlands relating, feeling what we want to do for the fire training building.
Oh.
So, because, because there's, there's wetlands on that property, so.
That was tight in the back. I remember when we built it.
Yeah, yeah. As we go through these, and they're all pretty self-evident, right? What I would like to do, though, is for Bittner to move forward with the, that restroom restoration project.
Yeah.
Okay. And also definitively on the Jacobs, Jacobs Beach, upgrade the septic system. We've been having to pump that every couple of weeks because of the amount of usage we've gotten out of it. So Rick is currently working with Sonya for design on that end.
I was just gonna add, there's also some talk of possibly expanding that facility too.
Yeah, that's a real home run.
Yeah. So, so what I'd like to do is, you know, approve these all in concept, but I'm definitively moving forward with upgrading the septic system and the restroom project. How, how do folks feel about replacing the benches on the downed green?
Yeah, some of them are rough.
Yeah, all right, we'll do that one.
Interestingly, another thing that gets an incredible amount of use, there's always a lot there. Yeah, I think in general, we can leave that number in there and knowing that, you know, there's flexibility in specifics.
Great. All right. You need a motion on that one? Yeah, we have a motion on that one, Charlie.
I'll move it.
A second?
I'm sorry, Sue's got it.
All right, let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Most abstaining, refusing, hearing non-motion carries. Thank you very much. We've, you know, slowly, we're working our way towards what we're doing with this. And thank you for supporting these projects. I think this is worthwhile. Phase, phase two. We still, obviously, even if we expended all of that, one point five plus the four point five, we've still got, what, a million and a half left, okay? Phase two is what I'm calling the more, the private side, or it's really not private, but nonprofit organization families and businesses that were directly impacted by, by COVID. I'm currently, I can say this because it's part of, part of their meeting, currently having discussions with the Guilford Foundation to bring in a mediator or someone to design a program so that people, you know, design the criteria for how the money gets distributed, qualification processes, evaluation processes. And I have three or four folks, Ed Myers, one of them, Ken Gervens, another, former Speaker of the House of Representatives, Brendan Sharkey is now a resident of Guilford. And Barbara Casey, who's filled a leading role on the facilities task force, have all agreed to be part of a commission that oversees that process. So I'm slowly working that, that piece in that. And, you know, my, my, my hope is we could take another billion dollars and make that available through that, through that channel. And then the fourth, the third bucket is infrastructure. We're waiting, the, the final guidance, this is the one that everyone is very unclear about, is what can you use for, for infrastructure? Can you use it for roads? Can you use it for water projects? Can you use it for riding? And, and what seems to be happening is they're waiting for the Congress to do something on the infrastructure bill to see if that obviates the need to use ARPA funds for, for infrastructure, so. But remember, we still have another three point two million dollars, so, you know.
And, and just to get back, you, you factored in some lost revenue to parks and rec, but you said there's a way to factor in lost revenue to the whole town?
Whole town, exactly, exactly. And that number, and that number, the, the, the way the guidance, here's the guidance came out was you could assume a four point one percent increase in the street year over year from nineteen to twenty, and then from twenty to twenty. That could be, and basically, our expenditures, our budgets over the last couple of years have increased by a couple of percentage points. That still leaves a couple of percentage points on a hundred million dollar budget. Pretty soon, you're talking about real money. We're talking a couple of million dollars. And that would clearly, that those funds would go right back into, into the unfunded, the unassigned fund balance. That would be considered a surplus, which is, will create other opportunities, particularly if the infrastructure stuff is not allowed. We could move that money back into unfunded, into unallocated and appropriate it as we did here for infrastructure projects like the dam up, you know, up on Lake Quantipod or some of the other projects, so. There's, there's a lot of opportunities, so. And I appreciate you bearing with me as we slowly work our way through this process.
But we're usually getting negative COVID news, so this is a little positive COVID news. Not that your weekly reports are.
Thank you, thank you for that. We will represent the Board of Finance tonight that you guys are all supporting the project.
But I have to run. I have a work commitment.
Two?
I have a hard ten thirty, so.
Yeah, well, and I got a hard ten fifteen.
I got, I got till five o'clock. You want to continue?
Look, just, just gotta.
The cannabis, I saw that. I mean, that statement is fine.
Yeah, just, I'm saying, let's discuss what they possibly actually, hearing date of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, through December, public comment on an ordinance for temporary moratorium on cannabis retail sales in the town of Guilford.
I'll move it.
You'll move it? Thank you. Second, any further comments? I think this is gonna give us, we're gonna extend it, we're gonna extend that moratorium until July, I mean, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two so that we can fully engage the community in an analysis and evaluation of what, where this community wants to go on that. And thank you very much for the robust discussion we had.
Aye. Because I think there was a signature setting the date.
So is that just before our regular meeting that day?
Yes.
Yes.
So will we start earlier?
This is, this, no, this is, yeah, we'll start a little earlier. And this is just a moratorium. This is, you know, this is giving us the ability to have that moratorium and then create the public dialogue and discourse.
Okay.
And that public dialogue shouldn't be at eight thirty AM.
No, it's not gonna, no, no.
But for this purpose, it's fine.
We're good?
Yeah.
All right, so there's a motion on the, to do so, Charlie's got it. It was the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Most abstaining, refusing, hearing non-motion carries.
It is at eight thirty, for the moratorium, not for the overall concept of zoning.
We're just having a public hearing to enact the ordinance on the temporary moratorium.
Right.
But then there's gonna be an opportunity publicly for the public to speak.
Yes.
But not at this meeting. I mean, they can, they can, but it's, it's, right. And we'll do it, as you pointed out, not, we'll do it in the evening properly.
Yeah.
But we're, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. So we're just gonna start at eight thirty, not eight. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Thank you for that. I think that's the, uh, that was a sentiment.
Yes.
All right, uh, item eight, appointments and resignations, uh, act on resignation received from, uh, I know Ms. Bob, who's up, uh, from the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission, effective October one, twenty twenty-one. I'd like to make that motion with appreciation and regret.
Same, same.
Bob's a really good guy. And actually, he was, he played in the, uh, the tournament, uh, a couple of weeks ago, so, uh, try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Most staying, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Uh, item nine, act on, uh, request for use of town property. Country school place to sign on the green advertising, it's open house, taking place October eighteenth, twenty, and twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Sign placement, ten-eleven through ten-twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Second.
Second, second. Let me try your minds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most staying, refusing, hearing none, motion carries. Committee reports, nothing at this point. Representatives, if they have anything? All business? New business? Into, uh, public forum? Anyone on there, public forum? I'll entertain a motion for adjourned?
Some would.
Second.
Second.
Time's a bit old. All questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Good meeting, folks. Thank you.